Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the happy usage and your participation. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
Interim City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Fever.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands the Constitution of America, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
All right, Board Appointments. I am recommending the following Board Appointments. Business Improvement District, BID. Interim Appointment of Alicia Pichet to the Business Improvement District. Interim term will begin upon appointment and expires on this October 31st, 2023. City-County Consolidated Parks Board. Appointment of Benjamin Cooper to the City-County Consolidated Parks Board as the City Representative. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on September 30th, 2024. Lewis and Clark County Library Board. Appointment of Marcy Lewandowski to the Lewis and Clark County Library Board as a City Representative. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on December 31st, 2026. Zoning Commission. Appointment of Elizabeth Betsy Story to the Zoning Commission as a full member. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on September 30th, 2025. Do we have any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd move the following Board Appointments to the Business Improvement District. Interim Appointment of Alicia Pichet to the Business Improvement District. Interim term will begin upon appointment and expire on October 31st, 2023. To the City-County Consolidated Parks Board, the Appointment of Benjamin Cooper to the City-County Consolidated Parks Board as a City Representative. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on September 30th, 2024. To the Lewis and Clark County Library Board, the Appointment of Marcy Lewandowski to the Lewis and Clark County Library Board as a City Representative. Term will begin appointment upon appointment and expire on December 31st, 2026. And to the Zoning Commission, Appointment of Elizabeth Betsy Story to the Zoning Commission as a full member. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on September 30th, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Fever.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. A Resolution Consent Agenda. A resolution requesting distribution of Bridge and Road Safety and Accountability Program funds to be used for Rodney Street Reconstruction Project. Commission, discussion? No discussion from the Commission. Do we have any public comments on this topic? No public comments.
Mr. Mayor, I will move Consent Agenda Item A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Reed. Or Commissioner Dean, I apologize.
Aye.
Commissioner Fever.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Bid Award. Rodney Street Reconstruction Phase Two Bid Award. Transportation System Director, Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
This evening, we bring to you the Bid Award for the Phase Two of Rodney Street Reconstruction. We only received one bid, and that bid was from Helena Sand. And that bid was in the amount of $4,345,693.50. This is going to be replacing aging utilities and complete streetscape reconstruction. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this bid award.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Any comments or questions for Director Knopki?
Mr. Mayor, do you have a couple?
Please, go ahead.
Thanks, Director Knopki. Couple questions. First, with this large of a project, I guess, were you surprised that we only got one bid? And can you maybe talk a little bit about why the bid came in, what, like $200,000 over the initial estimate?
Mayor and Commissioner Dean, I was surprised that there wasn't more bidders. I don't know why that is. We called several contractors. As far as the bid coming in about $200,000, I think that that's just a result of the ongoing materials shortages, lack of some contractors are still trying to find staff. I know we're still getting stuff put in that was on order from Phase One because of the material shortage. So I think that that made up for it, or made up that $200,000, and I think we were pretty fortunate to come in at the bid we were at with considering the cost of oil going up and everything else, so.
One more question, Mr. Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
And then, that's super helpful. Can you maybe just review, because I know we have not had a ton about the Rodney Street project as of late, and there was a little bit of time there where it's all we talked about for a while. Can you review what the timeline looks like for this Phase Two and when folks can expect to see, maybe not even just completion, but disruption and traffic and everything else over there, and then we might, when we might be done?
Sure. Mayor and Commissioner Dean, we'll have a couple weeks to get contracts together, get those signed, check bonds, get a pre-con together. But I believe the contractor is wanting to get going on this project as soon as possible because this is obviously a larger piece of the Rodney Street Reconstruction, so it is going to take a little bit longer. We are fortunate that there is not as much utility work to be done on this piece. But I would, I would think that the residents and residents of Helena can start seeing disruption of that area in probably starting in late May, early June, depending on how fast we get those contracts turned around. You know, there, there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts to each one of the projects, and, and the contractor will come up with, with his timeframe on, on which sections he'll be working on at what time. So once we get that project scheduled, we'll definitely get that out on our project website and get it out to social media so people can start planning appropriately. The one thing that, you know, with this project did impact the cities is that we had a potential mill and overlay of 11th between Cruz and Rodney. Because we believe, and this hasn't been confirmed until the contractor tells us, but we believe that that haul route might be along across that 11th Avenue there for any of the materials coming in, asphalt excavation that we chose, that if they do use that as a haul route, we're going to hold off on that project so that that new asphalt doesn't get beaten up by the construction traffic.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Director Knopki?
I guess just one more question. With that, does that mean that, well, because I, it was last budget, the last budget that we, we appropriated money for that 11th Avenue Mill and Overlay that just carries over than if it can't be done?
Mayor and Commissioner Dean, yes, that's what we'll be requesting that carryover so we can complete that next, next spring.
Great, thanks.
Mayor?
One thing leads to another, I suppose. Is Helena Sand and Gravel due the 11th Street project to?
Mayor and Commissioner Fever, no. That's the 11th Avenue, we will be having another contractor doing the ADA ramps as required by the DOJ prior to additional asphalt being put down. And then that mill and overlay will be conducted by city staff. That's an internal project where we'll contract out the milling to a contractor and then we'll do the overlay as part of our maintenance program.
So at least part of the, well, the labor force there is our own. That gives us some flexibility. Presumably, the other contractor will be flexible too at this point?
Mayor and Commissioner, you know, that's, once we sit down with them at the pre-con and see what their thoughts are, then we'll have a better idea on that.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I will move to approve the Rodney Street Phase Two Reconstruction Project, City Project Number 20-26 to Helena Sand and Gravel in the amount of $4,345,693.50.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Fever.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Communications proposals from the Commission. What do you have on your plate, Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Logan.
I don't suppose those at home can see the chambers, but it's not full, but there's, there are a lot of people here, and I just would like to say thanks for coming. It's good to see people back in the chambers and, and have folks to interact with, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just wanted to briefly thank our Helena Police Department who did an excellent job on Saturday helping manage the parade route. I think it was a very fun day. All the floats were great, but really grateful to HPD for all their work in keeping folks safe up and down the parade route.
Thank you. And I think this is our City Attorney first day, so I want to welcome Ms. Doctor to the chamber and to the City of Helena. Welcome, and if you have anything you want to say, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Yes, I have nothing to report today except to say thank you, and I look forward to being here.
Good. Any others? Okay, we'll move along. The City Attorney has nothing to report. We're going to conclude her with that. City Manager, report.
Mayor, I don't have anything to report this evening, but I would like to welcome Ms. Doctor as the new City Attorney as well. I know that she's going to fit right into the organization and do yeoman's work on behalf of all of us, so, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, Helena Citizens Council. Helena Citizens Council Representative Lowell Chandler, are you available, Lowell? Okay, Lowell is not here. We will call him back once he arrives. Regular items. Consider a sidewalk variance request at 109 Willow Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
This is a sidewalk variance request for installation of sidewalks along this property on 109 Willow. The area is unimproved streets. The only sidewalk in the area is out on Green Meadow, which is about a half a block to the east. The property owner is obviously requesting a variance, in a, a variance to the city code and city engineering standards at sidewalks to be required per this complete streets. We would, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if the city chooses to move forward this variance, also would request that a waiver of SID be put onto it so that when the streets do get improved, the sidewalks get approved along with that.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Do we have any comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
She would throw me off. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reed.
Director Knopki, just a question. I noted that the homeowner said that they were worried that if the streets were paved, all of the sidewalks would be torn out. Could you speak to that concern? What would happen if a sidewalk was put in now and streets were later paved?
Mayor and Commissioner, if, if the sidewalks were to be required at the building, we would work with the property owner to try to make sure that the sidewalks are at the grade such that, that when the road gets paved, that the sidewalks won't, because we'd be putting in the Boulevard sidewalks as the complete standard, so, Complete Streets Policy says, which allows us the seven-foot of Boulevard. So if we are off a little bit, we can make up that difference in the Boulevard, but it would be our intent not to install sidewalks that would be later have to be ripped out because that's just not good for the city or the property owner.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Commission?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm.
Go ahead.
Mr.? I'm pleased, Mr. Knopki, with your recommendation, that adding the proviso or the condition that the SID is not, that they would be waived. I don't believe a sidewalk in that one property on that street makes sense at this point in time, so I think the variance is in order.
Commissioner? Okay. Do we have any public comments? Man, this public is pretty quiet. That's awesome. We'll keep moving along. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a brief question. So, Mr. Knopki, from what I can gather, though, there's, the reason that we grant variances is if there's a unique or unusual or an undue burden that would present itself by following city code. Would you say that's accurate?
Mayor and Commissioners, yes.
And from the application, the reason that they want the variance is, is because they don't want to have to pull up the sidewalk whenever there would be street improvement?
Mayor and Commissioner, yes, that's what the application stated.
But we, and, and then I guess, fault question, would be, city staff is working, would be working with, if this variance was denied, city staff would ensure that the sidewalk that were to be installed would be at a grade so that would not have to be removed when the street is upgraded?
Mayor and Commissioners, that's correct. I would add, this is that same area that was previously brought forward to you that had an SID or an RID for the utilities to be installed, and then the intent, as my understanding was years ago when that went through, was once that SID was completed that this, we would go back and, and do the streets. And we have yet to reach out to the homeowners on that, so that is a possibility for the area. It does impact this, this request. So I am in favor of complete streets and boulevards. I believe that they're great amenity to any property and assist in making the community a better and beautiful place. But there always are extenuating circumstances that come before you to, to determine whether that meets those requirements or not.
Thank you.
Okay, without any other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I will move that we consider a sidewalk variance request at 109 Willow
Second.
With the proviso, I should add that with the condition that they waive any opposition to a SID regarding streets and curbs, should that occur?
Do we have any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I'm, I'm going to be a no on this. I think that, I think it's important that the Commission be really careful about when it does grant variances in circumstances that are unique or unusual and present some sort of hardship to the property owner. I don't think that the reasoning provided in the application shows that there is a hardship. I think that city staff, as Director Knopki mentioned, will ensure that the sidewalk is, is built to a standard that works when we do put in complete streets here, and I think that the more that we provide variances in circumstances like this, the more it just kicks the can down the road. And one of the things we consistently hear year after year is that we do not have enough connectivity in town. I understand this will be the first sidewalk on that street, but it's also a new development, new building that will be occurring on this property. So I think it's really important that we do it right from the beginning so that we don't continue to run into these issues 30, 40, 50 years down the line as we're experiencing now because of decisions that were made a generation ago, two generations ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the Commission? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Fever.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Commissioner Reed?
I'm so sorry, technical difficulties. I can hear you again. Could we please go back to the, the vote? I apologize, I, my computer froze.
We, we are at the vote, Commissioner.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the beginning of it. I apologize, I, everything froze, and I was trying to fix it.
Oh, you're talking about the motion?
Yes, the motion, my apologies.
Okay, Commissioner, would you please repeat your motion?
I'm sorry.
That we approve a sidewalk variance request at 109 Willow Avenue with the condition that the property owner not contest a SID, show that a rise regarding streets.
And it's your turn to vote, or do we go?
I am, no, nay, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero, or three to two, excuse me.
Regular item B, Bravo. Consider a sidewalk variance at 1903 Knight Street. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Good evening again.
Evening.
The owner of 1903 Knight Street is also requesting a sidewalk variance for their property located on the aerial above. Currently, the street is paved to a nominal width, not to current standards, but it is paved, and the surrounding area is unimproved. Again, this is city code and the Complete Streets policy state that we start with Boulevard sidewalks and, and go down from there, and if the property owner wishes, they can come to the Commission to, for a variance. These are some photos of the property as of today. One of the reasons for the request was the interface between the neighbor to the west, which is the lower right picture. Again, we can, you know, work with the property owner to make sure that the sidewalks at the appropriate elevation for when the street does get improved. The other reason was the street to the west of them, the property owner to the south, they have some fences that are encroaching on right away at this point. So if they were to install sidewalks where they would be properly placed, the current center line of the road is offset, so the sidewalks would be roughly 16 and 19 feet off the existing roadway. Looks very weird, but, I mean, and again, it is in an area that doesn't have sidewalks. We would work with adjacent property owners and this property owner to ensure that we got the sidewalks in the proper placement. This one is a little bit different because of the offset roadway and the, it is a corner lot, but I would be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Director Knopki, you mentioned, but you didn't explain when you said, one of the reason was the neighbor to the west, I think.
Okay.
What about the neighbor to the west?
The Mayor, Commissioner, the neighbor to the west has an existing fence, and there's an elevation difference between his property and the 1903 Knights. So that would have to be mitigated upon the neighbor to the west installing sidewalks, but we would be able to hopefully work with both of them to get something to an elevation that would be mitigated between the two of them so that when the neighbor to the west or the entire street decides to put sidewalks in, they would be in a position that they could be placed appropriately without having to be torn out or report.
Thank you. Any other Commissions, Commissioners? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Please come forward. Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and the Commission. My name's Doug McGee. I purchased the property of 1903 Knight Street a couple years ago. Just completed the project of the building. A little over a month ago, I moved in. At that time, I did meet with Mr. Knopki here, with Mr. Leland, Mr. Jorgensen, and another gentleman, I can't recall his name right offhand, and they had denied my request at their, at our meeting, saying that I could come and discuss this with the Commission and, and you. So at that time, they asked that before I could get a certificate of occupation, that I would provide a, like a promissory-type financial check, just in case this was denied, so they could give me the certificate of occupation, so. With that, I did consult with my general contractor, Rob Martin, from Great Divide Home Builders, who's got a history of being the, I do believe, the president of the Helen Home Builders Association, and he came in and explained to me some of the concerns that he had and that the city should also take into account. Much of that is what I had presented to Mr. Knopki and the others. And with that being said, I would like to invite Rob Martin up to discuss. He's got some pictures also, and he's got a better explanation of some concerns.
Hand these out?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Martin.
Thank you very much for being able to look at those.
Would you give a copy to the Clerk, please? Yeah, they don't have the divider anymore, so they can share. Okay, you want to give a copy to the people sitting there? That's.
My name's Rob Martin. I'm a contractor here, and I was Doug's contractor on his house. In the first page, you can see where we measured the property line to the street, which I still know where the sidewalk would be put, but being it's a corner, it needs a handicap access corner, and I'm not sure how that happens without curbs and with the streets being, in one case, 10 or 12 feet further away, in another case, seven or eight feet further away than it normally would be. And the next page is really the biggest problem we have, the sidewalk. If you can see the three arrows pointing there, two of those are curb stops, and one of them's a waistline, and they are right on the property line. Sidewalk needs to be a foot from the property line. Those curb stops are approximately five feet higher. Those curb stops are approximately five feet higher than where the sidewalk will be, and if we dig that sidewalk out, they will be about a foot from the surface, so they will freeze. They are not being used. For whatever reason, they put four curb stops on the slot and four sewer lines. So those are going to have to be moved if we were to do a sidewalk because it'll just freeze the water lines. And then on the next page, you can see the neighbor's fence. The sidewalk would go right to that fence, a foot away from it. So the fence is going to fall down. And I can't really be responsible for the neighbor's fence, so that's somehow also got to be mitigated. I don't think the intent here is never to put a sidewalk in, it's just that there's some issues that have to be taken care of first. And there are issues that, as the general contractor, I really couldn't resolve, like how to do the corners or how to deal with curb stops. They are, you know, within a foot of the surface where the sidewalk goes. So those are my comments, and if anybody else needs to see these.
Yeah, I don't leave yet.
Okay.
You're the expert, right? So but if you can't resolve this and you're telling us that there isn't, you have the intention to put in this sidewalk, but resolution can't come from you. So how do we resolve this?
Well, those curb steps need to be removed. And then some kind of an agreement needs to be made with the neighbor so that he can fix his fence. If you see the way the lot sloped, ideally, we would like to just slope the whole lot down to the sidewalk. But we can't, and that was our intent originally until we saw all these curb stops there and they would just be sticking out of the ground. So we can't properly grade it to the sidewalk. It's just going to be a steep hill until those are removed.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Please.
My question's for Director Knopki. Can you maybe address some of those concerns? I guess one of the things here is that the likelihood of, I mean, there will likely be some upgrades around there because there is so much development currently occurring in this neighborhood in particular. And if we look at the map, we can see how many lots are primed for development. Can you address some of the issues raised and if you have any other input?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners. So as far as the sidewalks and curb and gutter, the sidewalks would be placed in accordance with our typical section, which would be a foot off the property line. And then we'd have the five-foot sidewalk, seven-foot boulevard, and then that would get us to the back of curb. As far as the accessible ramp, with this being a unique situation, we would have to work with them to get the ramp at the appropriate height so that it could cross the roadway. Again, there is, like you mentioned, there's an empty lot directly to the east that looks like it's, you know, might be primed for development. But the utilities, I would have to defer to the Public Works on why there are four services to that lot.
I believe it was initially four lots. They're twenty-seven foot wide lots, so Mr. McGee is using all four of those lots.
Yeah, so those would just have to be abandoned per city policy if they're not going to be used. And then the sidewalk, I believe that there's an alley, a platted alley behind here that the sidewalks going to the south wouldn't directly be to the fence. And same with the west, we could, if this were to be denied, we could put in a special provision that it was stopped prior to these fences so that the homeowner and contractor don't impact those fences until such time that the rest of the street gets improved. Again, infill is sometimes difficult and we run into these situations. But our goal here is to work with the homeowner to try to resolve them as easily as possible for everyone involved.
I guess another issue that comes up, and I'm sure that you can find a resolution to it, but on this one page, you can see the two property lines. If we were to run the sidewalk, it would basically be going into the back of the neighbor to the south's house. Now, there is an alleyway there to separate it.
Sir, I think you should be talking to us because we need to understand what you're saying in order for us to
On page three, the photograph that is kind of sideways on the picture shows two pin markers, one I've marked with an orange dot and then the one stake you can see right in front of you.
Yeah.
As you can see, the neighboring house to the south is, and his property line is in line with that. The house is over that line. In fact, it would probably, the sidewalk would run to it. So I'm not sure how that gets resolved in the future, but that's an issue that I see with it.
Thank you. And Mr. Knopki, I see on page one, the first picture there, I can see where putting sidewalk in there would be pretty tough, where you have knight on the road. You see where, that would be tough because it's all, it's in the curve, right?
So Mayor and Commissioners, that it is tough. This is that area where the streets are paved but not to a full city width, so we're short.
Right.
Even if the homeowner was going to put in curb and gutter, we'd be short of that, so and then the slope, as they refer to, it does, the house sits up at probably an average elevation of the lot. And it does slope down, so there would be some challenges getting the sidewalk in to the appropriate height. But, you know, that's, it's going to happen now or it's going to happen then when we install the sidewalks. We're still going to have the elevation issue and we're still going to have that slope issue that we're going to have to deal with, so whether we deal with it now or later, the street width is the problem here because the asphalt would end short of that and they would have basically from the sidewalk to the street, a dirt slope depending on the height of the elevation of the sidewalk in relation to the street.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Please go ahead, Commissioner Logan, and then we'll have you, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as in the last example, if we were to accept this variance, what assurance in the future might we include here tonight that that sidewalk would be, those sidewalks would be developed at the time of improvements in the area?
Mayor and Commissioner Logan, it would be the same as the previous sidewalk variance, it would be a waiver of an SID or waiver protest to the SID when that SID comes to, or those improvements come to the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, Director Knopki, I think I've heard the pieces, but could you just lay out for us, what would a timeline look like if variance was not approved? What would be a reasonable progression of events that would allow the sidewalks to be done? Understanding that the elevation issues are what they are, but with the removal of the excess utilities, could you lay out what that process would look like? Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioner Reed, is that, are you asking for if they are to be installed now or with an SID?
Yes.
You know, that would be really dependent upon working with the homeowner, working with the contractor to try to resolve these to a to a level that everyone's comfortable with. I really don't have a timeline until we start looking at those additional services and with the understanding that they're all going to the property owner's lot. They're just, it would take some time to go through that, so I don't have a good answer for you, but we could definitely keep the commission posted if that's the direction that we go tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if I might clarify just slightly?
Please.
Thank you, Director Knopki. I appreciate that and I don't think I asked my question very well. I think I'm less interested in an actual timeline, but what would the steps be? Would it begin with us removing those utilities? Is there a logical progression that would allow sidewalks to be done now?
Mayor and Commissioner Reed and Commissioners, the logical progression would be to first sit down with the homeowner and their contractor to try to mitigate these issues that have been brought up. Say the sidewalk that's going north and south, you know, obviously, we're not going to want a sidewalk that is going to dead end at the alley, but lines up with, you know, a house on the other side. We would have to look at how we would work with that encroachment of the house to the south and then look at the removal of those additional, extra services that are there and then come up with a plan and move forward with that plan once we kind of tackle some of those questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, thanks. I don't see Mr. Leland on, but I'm wondering it appears that the greatest hardship appears to be the utilities there. Is there a way that we could get some sort of clarification on what steps would be on the city's part to resolve that?
Mayor and Commissioner Dean and Commissioners, I could tomorrow reach out to Public Works and get what their plan would be to remove those services. That would probably entail tabling this until such time that we could come back with an answer to the commission, but I would be more than happy to reach out to Public Works tomorrow and then we can forward a response, not only to the commissioner, but the city manager if we get that figured out sooner and then put it on a later agenda at the commission's direction.
Who will be the earliest who can get this back on the agenda where it tabled?
Mayor, I believe we'd be able to get it back on the agenda at the next commission meeting.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think we should move with that. In my opinion, I'll entertain a motion for us to move with that. Just, I prefer the full picture. It's not that I don't want variance or I want the variance, but I prefer to vote on the full picture, so that's why.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm for the full picture and the full picture is we're piecemealing sidewalks in undeveloped neighborhoods. And I think that's just silly. What we need to do is put in a street with curbs and sidewalks down the whole street. And that's where we should be on the Willow Avenue request. And so I really object to having this piecemeal sidewalk stuff going forward because, well, frankly, this paved road, as we want to call it on the west side of town, and there's a number of them, they go, they're just all cattle lompas around town. I mean, I understand that there was a lot of politics and folks were worried about the cost of, you know, the annexation that had to happen. We had to have city water and sewer, that had to happen. So we just crimped on the streets and curbs and gutter stuff. And now we're paying the price, piecemeal, one homeowner at a time. I'm very sympathetic to the homeowner here. I look at this and I think, well, this makes no sense. And, you know, not to say that the engineers can't and the labors can't put together a really good plan that will come up with a sidewalk that meets code for one property and a corner and a handicap access and it won't dead end in an alley. Give me a break already. We have a existential issue here and it's because, as Emily Dean, as the Commissioner Dean points out, a previous commission and maybe in the annexation process decided to go on the cheap. So we have what I wouldn't really call much of a street. And if you go out and walk around this property, as I have done, you'll appreciate far more than these pictures will show what a kind of commanding issue this is for them. So we can wait another two weeks, but unless something really dramatic comes forward in terms of information we get from other directors, I think that approving this variance with the condition that they not protest a SID for a real street is in order.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll entertain a motion to table this.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to table the deferment of a sidewalk installation at 1903 Knight Street along Knight Street and Linden Street.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I do have public comment.
Oh.
Put into the record, if I may.
Okay.
I do have a comment from Mark Runkel online. I thought the commission could require sidewalks at any time per city code. Am I wrong? And that is all.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the commission? Find a discussion. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean? Aye. Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Mr. Mayor, and before we leave this issue, because apparently folks want to build sidewalks one by one, but they don't want to build streets. I'd really like to know what the long-range plan is for these streets that are gravelled.
Commissioner, we have an agenda to follow and
This is consistent with the motion we just made to table. Because we ought to bring back to the commission, at the same time we're bringing back this specific property, what the plan is. I mean, there has to be a larger plan than one sidewalk, one property at a time. And so I think that's exactly the sort of business of this commission, to see that something of that nature is at least thought about and articulated. Thank you.
C. Consider a resolution, amended resolution number 19818 by altering the boundaries of special improvement lighting district number 222 and adding twenty-two street lights to special improvement lighting district number 222. Director Danielson?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. This is a resolution for minor modification, special improvement lighting district number 222. This is out at Mountain View Meadows, Craftsman Village, Phase Six. And as the homes continue to be built and the development continues to expand, R and D developers has petitioned the city to amend the existing street lighting district to add an additional twenty-two street lights, incorporating forty-one new parcels into the lighting district. This is a minor lighting district amendment because it actually reduces the the cost to the homeowners from .0256 cents per square foot to .02532 cents per square foot. And I am just here and available for questions if you have any on this amendment to the lighting district.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions from the commission on this topic? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mayor and Commissioners, I have no raised hands or written public comment online.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Logan.
I would move to approve a resolution, amending resolution 19818 by altering the boundaries of special improvement lighting district number 222 and adding twenty-two street lights to special improvement lighting district number 222.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean? Aye. Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Delta, consider a resolution of intention to approve the work plan and budget for the business improvement district and to levy an assessment on all properties within the district for fiscal year 2023. Director Danielson, you're still on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The BID work plan and budget and proposed assessment methodology was first presented to the commission on March 23rd. At that meeting, there was a change to the assessment methodology. We have since met with the BID and have proposed to continue to work with them to come up with a methodology that is favorable for both the city and the BID. And so they have requested or they are proposing their assessment to remain the same as the prior year. The budget and the work plan was talked about at that May 23rd meeting, but I do believe that but I do believe that, um, Mickey Zurker, who is the executive director of the BID, is online and can address any of your questions regarding the, the, the work plan and budget if, if, um, if you care to have that, um, comment from her. I will ask you to consider the, um, the motion but to amend the resolution of intention to read from $400 flat fee to $425, 2 cents per square foot to 3 cents per square foot, and 2% of taxable value to 3% value. This is, um, an oversight when we put the resolution of intention together, we pulled from a couple of years ago. Last year, we had actually, um, brought forward the, the, the 425, 3 cents and, um, 3% in the resolution of intention in past, it has no impact, um, from last year to this year on the city or the other residents. It was just an oversight with a resolution of intention, and it does, um, speak to those amounts in the actual work plan of the, the BID. So the, the motion, um, based on my conversation with, um, Assistant City Attorney Eric Coet, asks that I, um, um, ask you to approve the resolution of intention with those following amendments, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Oh, who would be giving those many amendments? Do you, uh, anyway, comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Please, go ahead, Commissioner Logan.
For Director Danielson, could you repeat those amounts again?
Yes, the, um, the, if you look into the resolution...
Sure.
It's on, um, page two of the resolution, um, section A. Um, number one should read $425 per assessed property. Number two should be 3 cents per square foot land assessed, and number three should be 3% of taxable value assessed property. And then on page three of the resolution for public property, number one, it should be $425 per public property.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, follow up, so...
Please, go ahead.
Question for anyone out there, uh, how, how best to handle these amendments and, and a motion?
Mayor, Commissioner Logan, may I defer this to Eric Coet?
Mr. Coet, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I would make a motion that reads as follows. I move to approve a resolution of intention to approve the work plan and budget for the business improvement district and to levy an assessment on all property within the district for fiscal year 2023, as that resolution appears in our agenda with the following changes. Section 1A1 be changed to read $425. Section 1A2 be changed to read 3 cents per square foot of land of assessed property plus, and section 1A3 be changed to 3% of the taxable value of assessed property, and finally, that section 1B1 be changed to read $425 per public property. It's long and confusing, but that should, that should suffice.
Can we use that to give to the, uh, person that will be giving the motion?
I believe it's sufficient for whoever wants to make the motion...
Right.
...to, uh, say what he said.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coet. Okay, do we have any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm wondering, I know, uh, Mickey Zurker has her hand up. I was thinking she's probably going to present the work plan, and I had a question regarding the work plan.
Okay.
Do you want me to ask now, or wait?
We will wait for after commission comments, and then we will address public comments, so, and then you could go ahead. Do we have any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I'll only briefly comment that I appreciate, uh, Director Danielson, you're working with the bid. That was something I thought should happen, and it did, and so I'm grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any public comments? Ms. Zurker, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Can you guys hear me all right?
Good evening, yes, we can.
Thanks, hi, yeah, um, I just wanted to follow up and also thank, um, Sheila Danielson for the work and collaboration, um, as far as some of the direction that was given to us at that March 23rd work plan, um, presentation, and I know we have a scheduled meeting coming up here, I believe it's on May 19th, um, to start that conversation, just as Sheila had, uh, stated earlier, so I just wanted to publicly thank her for that, and I know we look forward to working with the city, um, and we being myself and the ad hoc committee who has been part of this conversation for the last two years. Um, and then to directly answer, Commissioner Dean, if I may, I wasn't planning to say anything else about the work plan, because the work plan has not changed, um, since my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer whatever question you have for me.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Zurker, Commissioner Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I was asked this question the other day after, um, a couple people had, during the parade and afterwards, 406 Recycling had left up, um, their recycling receptacles, and I was asked by a couple folks if it would be possible for us to include a recycling option, um, with, and I believe the, the garbage collection falls under the streetscape program, um, so I'm wondering if it would be possible for us to start considering what it could look like to have some sort of recycling option, um, near the trashcans, um, within the BID. And if there is a financial impact, maybe that's something that we can, uh, discuss with the Tiff District and, um, within the city as well.
Director Zurker, you have the floor.
Thanks, Commissioner Dean, for the question. I can answer you this way, so part of the Zero Waste Solutions Program, I think, that is with, going on currently within the city, I believe it's falling under Public Works, um, and the gentleman's name is Jeremy, he and I have been in conversations, he has come to a couple of our downtown general membership meetings, in addition to some board meetings to give presentations and the update on that project that the city is working on. We recently corresponded, and by recently, I want to say within the last week, for sure, last two weeks, about the option of recycling, um, so I somewhat suspect that that question is going to come forward as a request to the BID, and I did mention to Jeremy that I'd be happy to bring it forward to my board for a further conversation. As you already pointed out, we don't currently have that option, um, but I think as we've worked towards the city's solution, I think it's 2040 or 2030 that you guys talked about being more green, that that would be an option that I'm sure the BID would be willing to consider.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner, Commissioner Logan?
Commissioner Logan, just in case you cannot see it, there is, uh, Attorney Coet has put the text in the chat.
I'm deferring to Commissioner Dean.
Oh, Commissioner Dean?
I am happy to read it. I will move to approve a resolution of intention to, uh, approve the work plan and budget for the business improvement district and to levy an assessment on all property within the district for fiscal year 2023, as that resolution appears in our agenda with the following changes. Section 1A1 be changed to read $425. Section 1A2 to be changed to read 3 cents per square foot of land of assessed property plus a section, uh, 1A3 be changed to 3% of the taxable value of assessed property, and that the section 1B1 be changed to read $425 per public property, consistent with the resolution read by Attorney Coet.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, do we have any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Danielson. Okay. Echo, consider a resolution, amending resolution number 20726 by modifying the conditions of annexation placed on 36.55 acre parcel described as track B1 on the certificate of survey file on the document number 3203658. Lewis and Clark County, Montana, Planner McConnell, you have the floor.
Bear with me here, Mr. Mayor. There we go. Danae?
It's a cherry.
It shows Zoom as being up on here. I didn't do anything. At least my motion language will be simpler, so bear with us momentarily. Sorry about that. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you guys for, for all being here tonight. Uh, my name's Mike McConnell, I'll be, uh, presenting this item. Staff from Transportation Systems is also available, should any questions come up, um, at the end. King's Common is an item that was most recently, uh, at the commission on March 14th. Uh, that was for, uh, pre-zone ordinance and a resolution of intention annex. Uh, the reason this has come back is the applicant would like to alter one of the conditions, uh, to remove the requirement for sidewalks along Frontage Drive, um, and sure you're all aware, given the agenda tonight, but if this resolution is approved, this would then have to come back, uh, to commission for a variance during the building permit process. Uh, just so that everyone is clear and everyone recalls, uh, this is the vicinity map for the King's Common, uh, project that came before you on March 14th. It's approximately 1,000 feet, uh, north of the East Custer Avenue and North Washington Street, uh, intersection. So the subject property is a 35 and a half acre, uh, in-size property, um, you can see the, um, site plan here depicting, uh, what could be, or could become a higher density residential development. It was pre-zoned on the 14th to B2, that's our general commercial zone, um, allowing medium and high-density residential, as well as, uh, all manner of commercial uses, including restaurants, drive-throughs, uh, healthcare facilities, hotels, um, and other, other uses, obviously, offices as well. So you can see here, uh, the conditions that are specific to this annexation, um, process that was, uh, presented on the 14th. These are, um, conditions related to, uh, the roads either being newly constructed or improved to, um, city standard. Uh, this includes sidewalks, uh, adjacent, uh, to the subject property, and again, these were all, um, approved five, five to zero on the 14th. So this exhibit, uh, shows the sidewalk locations, uh, within the public rights away, uh, with a green line identifying, uh, the location in which the applicant would like to, uh, remove the condition for sidewalks. As conditioned, uh, all of the public rights away will meet the city's complete streets resolution, uh, 19799, um, and I know Mr. Knoppy just said it, but that says all streets need to, or should be designed to and constructed to accommodate all, uh, forms of transportation. Uh, walking and cycling are called out in the ordinance specifically. So the 2019 growth policy does, uh, support this project in several ways. Uh, first, you can see the future land use map here, uh, the specific property is called out, uh, as commercial, uh, in nature, or ideally, uh, suited to be developed, uh, in a commercial nature, and that includes medium to high-density residential. The property is also within the urban standards boundary, uh, and both of these indicate that, uh, any developments here should be built to, uh, a scale and with the amenities, uh, necessary to support urban growth, right? Sidewalks are an inherently urban feature, you know, necessarily, or necessary, uh, to the movement of all, uh, people of all ages and abilities. Um, this is why they feature so heavily, uh, in our city code, uh, and the engineering standards, and, uh, in the growth policy. So, um, this case is made throughout the growth policy document, which was vetted over a two-year period by the planning board, um, several working groups and committees, uh, previous iterations of, of the city commission, uh, as well as, uh, in, in my view, most importantly, an extensive, uh, public outreach process. So sidewalks and pedestrian mobility were among the most commented on, uh, items during that process. So I've listed some goals and objectives, uh, from the growth policy document that support, uh, pedestrian mobility. Uh, I've separated out the five that I believe are, are most relevant, and you can read those, uh, on your screen, I'm not going to read all of them. Uh, in my opinion, the most, uh, important would be Objective 47, which I will read, uh, and that's to maintain and improve the continuity of sidewalks, trails, and bicycle paths in Helena, improving conditions for non-motorized transportation across the city and between future neighborhood centers. Uh, so while walking is a, is a very important mode of transit, and sidewalks are obviously, uh, fundamental to that, there are instances, um, as we've learned tonight, that, uh, to delay their construction or, or cancel it outright might be the preferential, uh, option. Uh, it's in the opinion of staff and based on our relevant city plans and codes that, uh, this is not one of those times. So that's... I'm not sure what's going on there, but that's all I have for you today. I know the applicant is here and would like to, uh, make some brief remarks. All evidence to the contrary, I do have some motion language, uh, that I've prepared, uh, for when the time comes, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to address those at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Planner McConnell. Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments?
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Jeff Larson. And I'm the engineer on the King's Commons Development Project. Uh, as Mike stated, uh, you've already seen this project on March 14th, and he approved annexation and, and zoning for the property that this project develops. Unfortunately, we had a little confusion that night, and we missed the opportunity to speak, and, uh, we did want to talk about the, the sidewalk along the, the Frontage Road. Uh, to just step back and talk a little bit more about the project in general, though, this is a desperately needed project in Helena. Uh, it's over 200 units of rental, uh, residential units, and, uh, and what we're trying to do as a part of this project is keep costs down. We want to pass those savings on to renters, we want to keep it as, as affordable as possible. Um, this, I wouldn't say this is affordable housing, this is more workforce-type housing. But we've already had some struggles with that, we've got the two collectors that are, you saw in those conditions, ones on, uh, is the extension of Washington Street, the other is on the north property line, those both have to be constructed in their entirety. The, the collector on Washington Street crosses that, uh, irrigate, Helena Valley irrigation canal, and, uh, that is, uh, another expensive improvement, where we're either going to have to do a bridge or a, a, a very large pipe to, uh, to, to make that happen. or a very large pipe to make that happen. And on the, up in the northwest corner, there's another irrigation crossing. This is a lateral. It's not the main ditch, but it's going to require some 48-inch reinforced concrete pipe. And then because of its location out in the valley, and we're actually below the wastewater treatment plant, we're going to have to put in a sewage lift station. And all these improvements, you know, they keep adding to the cost of this development. And the sidewalk is one last improvement that actually is very expensive. It's not just a sidewalk. It's the five-foot sidewalk, the full length. And if you look at the drawing that was just passed out, you know, it's all along that red route, we would have sidewalk. And in addition to sidewalk, we'd have a curb and a boulevard. And because of the way the road's constructed, there'd be a lot of fill material that would have to be imported to construct that sidewalk on. And then once you put in a curb, you've got storm drain improvements. So we've got to put in inlets and piping to connect all that in. So it becomes, you know, fairly costly. And then this project or this area has another problem that leads to expense, and that is at the irrigation crossing. And if you look at the photo that was also passed out, this photo, you can see the edge of the, you know, the distance between the edge of the road and the pipe is nowhere near the 12 feet that we need to put the sidewalk and the boulevard through there. So that leaves us in a position where we either have to extend that pipe away from the road to create a surface, or another option would maybe be a pedestrian bridge. Extending that pipe is very difficult. You can see there's a head gate, and that's the head gate for that irrigation lateral. And as we move that pipe closer to that head gate, it changes the hydraulics. The pipe, actually, the floor of the canal drops in that area. And so it's just a difficult situation, and it would be subject to the approval of the Helena Valley Irrigation District and the Bureau of Reclamation. And I don't know if they would approve this or not. So that, you know, probably the most likely solution would be a pedestrian bridge, which is another fairly significant expense. So you can see, you know, the costs that we would be facing. We were a little surprised to see this condition come up. This developer is the same developer of the Queen Anne's project, which is right across the same Frontage Road. And there was no sidewalk requirement on that side of the street for whatever reason. There's also the, the city of Helena owns a lift station, a sewage lift station, right there at that same intersection, and there's no boulevard sidewalk running in the Frontage Road there either. So there is some, you know, reason why we're a little surprised. To talk a little more about the operation, though, of the pedestrians and how things would operate, the Frontage Road to the north is a very narrow, high-speed route. There's very low pedestrian traffic. There's not much density until you get out a significant distance to the north. There is a subdivision, I think it's a mile, maybe mile and a half down the road. But because of that, you don't see much pedestrian traffic. I've never seen anybody walking down that road in the time that I've been working on this project. That doesn't mean that there's, I'm sure there are at times people there. I'm not saying it doesn't ever get used, but the use is low, and I think that's fair to say. So what we're proposing, or what would happen, is if we eliminated that route, we would have sidewalks along the collectors that would tie in, clear back up to that intersection at Queen Anne and the Frontage Road. There is also internal sidewalks within the development that could be used. And although these are private roads, the developer has no problem with public walking through there, and they actually have the right to because it's a public access easement. And so really, this is a redundant improvement. We have another route that works, and in my opinion, it works better. And that's because I believe it's a little bit safer. And this corner is a pretty sharp corner. Speeds are relatively high. They're, you know, 50 miles per hour, which is pretty high for city speed limits. And I, you know, to explain that, though, I want you to think about, well, if you live there and you were a parent, would you feel comfortable with sending your kids up on the sidewalk along the Frontage Road or where that sharp curve is and the higher speeds? Or would you feel more comfortable with the collectors or the internal streets? And I think the answer is obvious. The other point I would like to make is there are no businesses or residents that front this sidewalk. And I'm pro sidewalks. I mean, I think they're important, and maintaining pedestrian access is a vital thing for our community. But this is one of those rare situations where, you know, it's not a situation where you walk out the front door and you're trying to connect pedestrians to your pedestrian facilities. And I think that's an important difference in this situation. And I just, you know, with, between all these, you know, these, the canal crossing, the, you know, the redundancy that we have, the safe, you know, this little more safe issue, you know, I think we've got good reason to eliminate this sidewalk. And I would ask that you very seriously consider that. And I appreciate your time, and I apologize that, you know, we didn't get this done last time we were together and that we had to come back and do this again. But I do appreciate that you allowed it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question of the engineer, please. So I'm just looking at your proposal here, and the gray area appears to be sidewalks internal to the subdivision. And you're not suggesting that if somehow or another we require the sidewalk along the Frontage Road, that those internal sidewalks will be amended?
No, I think those are set, and we need those sidewalks to serve the internal part of the development.
Well, that's good. And so I'm assuming, as you just said, that no commercial properties will front on the sidewalk on the Frontage Road. None of these fourplexes or whatnot, and I think they're almost all fourplexes that I see here, one sixplex, would front on the Frontage Road either. Effectively, their front doors, as such as you might call them, are looking into the interior of the subdivision.
That is correct, yes.
So is there any grass, any fencing, anything between the subdivision and the Frontage Road that you're proposing?
Well, there'll be grass within the property line and then on the slopes of the road. It's actually, there's quite an elevation difference there. There will be just native grasses.
And just to reiterate, there is no sidewalk on the south side of the road at all?
That is correct.
And the Frontage Road has a very, I don't almost know how to describe, there's almost, it's almost hugged right up the interstate. I mean, it's really not any distance at all between the Frontage Road and the interstate. Once you make that turn there, there is no difference. It's just a fence.
That's correct, yes.
By the way, I have ridden my bike up that Frontage Road many times, and I've always wondered why, because the traffic is rather intense at times. Just a comment.
Do we have any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Please go ahead.
So what I'm hearing is that the hardship that you guys see is a financial one in putting in the sidewalks. I'm curious, what is the total cost of this development?
You know, it's, my part that I'm responsible with is just, responsible for is the water, the sewer, the streets, and, you know, and then the part I'm not responsible for is the buildings and all that. So I can speak to my part, and, you know, it's on the order of probably $5 million for the both phases. And that's a rough number.
Okay. And do you know, since you mentioned it was more workforce housing than affordable housing, do you know what the average rent is going to go for for these units?
I don't know, but it's, you know, they want to keep it as competitive as possible. And I mean, and right now, the situation is, you know, there's not enough housing out there, so that drives prices up. And so bringing in more housing, you know, should have the reverse effect, and that's what we're trying to do here.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any other public comments? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Mark Pearman, 1978 Grieber Road here in town. I'm the project manager for this King's Common project, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the owner and the design team. And, you know, asking for your consideration, myself and the owner and the design team feel this is a very valid request to have the sidewalk removed from the Frontage Road due to basically all the things that Jeff brought up. I mean, a lot of it is a financial hardship. I believe you asked about the cost on the sidewalks there, and I believe that's, it's about 3/4 of $1 million.
I meant the whole part, the whole project, the whole development.
Oh, the whole development is $35 million approximately. So the, just to preface this, the owner, and I've worked with him, this is probably the, excuse me, the, maybe the fifth project I've done with the owner. I'm going to say it's the fifth, and phase two is the sixth. And so I've been working with him for five, six years now, and, you know, he's spent a great deal of money in town. And he has demonstrated to me, and should be the city by now, that he is willing to bend over backwards to satisfy codes, requirements, you know, desires from the city, from the commission. He hasn't really balked at anything until this sidewalk along the Frontage Road. When the design team was originally planning this deal, they were planning on paving the collector roads only partway up to, you know, the subdivision, and the fire marshal, I believe, wanted them fully paved. So there was another big-ticket item on completing those collector roads all the way up. The fire marshal wanted the roads wider in this development versus the last one. So we stretched him out to the full city width. So he's gone overboard trying to satisfy everything that the city, but this deal kind of stuck in his craw a little bit because we, well, I don't feel it's a very safe situation to put pedestrian traffic out along that Frontage Road. It just is a, I mean, I've lived here all my life and used that Frontage Road a lot. And just like Jeff said, if I lived there, I would not want my children out walking on there riding bikes or whatever. But, and we figure that it is a very redundant feature because we've got sidewalks all the way along the, well, the north boundary and the east boundary, and all the interior sidewalks. And we figure they're like a way better situation than a sidewalk along the Frontage Road. And like Jeff said, he's just doing his best to hold costs down, but you start adding in $750 here and $750 there, and pretty soon rents increase. So, you know, that's a big part of the reason for the request as well, trying to keep the rents reasonable. So that's my point in asking for your consideration and this variance, and we think it's very reasonable. And if there's any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Pearman. Any comments or questions for Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, perhaps.
Go ahead.
I might offer a comment. I can certainly see what Mr. Larson referred to as a redundancy in terms of, you know, let's say you're getting from the intersection of Queen Anne's and the Frontage Road, I guess that would be called, to the northwest corner of our, of the plat that you gave us here. You can certainly get there through the internal streets, with the exception of that little section between the north collector road and that sort of extension of Queen Anne, but even that little piece is problematic from what you showed us here about making that connection in terms of pedestrian connectivity. So I guess that's my comment, is I'm just struggling a little bit with the lack of connectivity between Queen Anne's and that north collector road. Otherwise, I think I'd be okay with the idea. And just a comment, I guess.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no raised hands online. I have no written public comment on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Planner McConnell. You said you had wordings.
That's the draft motion language that we have for you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to deny a resolution amending resolution number 20726 by modifying the conditions of annexation placed on a 36.55 acre parcel described as track B1 on the certificate of survey filed under document number 3203658, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. And I do have a comment before we take a vote, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I certainly can sympathize with the cost of a sidewalk, of a development of this size. However, I do think that is part of the cost of doing business. We obviously need housing, but I also want to ensure that we have quality housing that ensures that folks who live in town can walk and cycle and stroll. We know right now there might not be much around here, but given that this is within the urban standards boundaries, we know that there is going to continue to be more development and more people and more need for connectivity, which is why I think it's imperative that we ensure that at the beginning. I think that some of those concerns were spoken to earlier when we have development that happens that is not complete, and then we end up having to deal with it 30, 40, 50, 60 years later. And I would like to not put ourselves in that position and not have another commission 40 years down the line having to address these types of concerns. And so with that, I will be voting in favor of the motion.
Do we have any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Logan.
I guess I'd just offer a comment that I, I believe that I'll be voting against this motion. I think there's, it seems to me like there's an opportunity for something in between. I'm just a city commissioner, though. But it does seem, you know, in listening to Mr. Larson's description and Mr. Pearman as well, of the, just putting that sidewalk on the Frontage Road, you know, not only in terms of cost, but in terms of traffic flows there, it just seems like there's an opportunity to connect that last, possibly putting that sidewalk in that northwest corner of the development that might be significantly less expensive and take care of the continuity, pedestrian continuity, and, but we're not going to have that opportunity here tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
If I might, I will also be voting in support of the current motion, but I also believe Commissioner Logan... believe, Commissioner Logan, I, I take his point. I think there could be, um, a different proposal that would accommodate the need for connectivity and pedestrian pathways, which I feel quite strongly about. I just don't believe the current request sufficiently addresses, uh, the need for sidewalks and pedestrian walkways. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
No.
The motion carries three to two.
Thank you. Consider the proposed medical insurance policy and premium structure effective July first, twenty twenty-two. Director McMahon?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
The current City of Helena's medical insurance plan structure, premium structure, was put into place to fund a self-insured, self-funded medical plan whereby each employee was provided a flat dollar amount to apply to their medical insurance. While that flat dollar amount per employee was originally designed to fund the self-funded plan and supplement premiums for employees who selected coverage for dependents and/or spouse- spouses, over time, that flat dollar amount has lagged behind, supporting employees with children and spouses thus has become insufficient and too expensive for employees. The city switched from a solely self-funded plan to MMI-A, a self-funded risk retention pool model in two thousand nine. Um, if the city clerk could share her screen, um, it's kinda cut off here, but, um, the City of Helena is proposing that we offer two plan designs, um, for benefit-eligible employees instead of four plan designs. Additionally, the City of Helena is proposing to change the medical insurance premium structure as defined and presented in your packet and what's projec- good luck reading that, what's projected above. Um, also, if you're, are in support, we would need to modify our current related benefit policy to reflect those changes. With that, if you have any questions?
Comments or questions from the commission?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners and, um, Director, I very much support this. Uh, I know we talked about it the other day. Uh, and I am delighted the city is moving forward on this. I, um, just confirming one more time that the unions have agreed that this is okay with them.
Right. If, if it's approved, they have agreed to put forward a memorandum of, of understanding to support this proposal.
And I guess time is of the essence, so we either do it tonight or we, we don't.
Correct. Um, open enrollment begins on, uh, May fifteenth.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Director McMahon. I, um, am really pleased that we're, we're moving forward with this proposal and, or hopefully moving forward with this proposal. And I'd like to thank you for the, and you and your staff for the work on this, um, not only in tur- terms of sort of dredging the market, but also the outreach. Sounds like there was some really good outreach to the employee groups, uh, within the city and, and, uh, this just seems like, uh, win-win. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Logan?
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
I move that, um, we consider the proposed medical ins- that we approve the proposed medical insurance policy and premium structure effective July one, twenty twenty-two.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any final discussion from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank, um, the Director for all of her work on this. Um, I'm very excited about what this might do for our recruitment and retention, um, efforts and really appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner Dean.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Public hearings, eleven alpha, consider a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a casino use in downtown zoning district for property legally described as parcel two-two of the first subdivision of the last chance revision of a portion of the original town site of Helena, Montana, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and Lot Twenty-three A, as shown on amended plat of Lot Twenty-three of the first subdivision of the last chance revision of a portion of the original town site of Helena, Montana, as shown on the amended plat filed on the document number four-four-three-eight-three-zero-dash-bravo. Records of Lewis and Clark County, Montana. The property is located at Nineteenth South Last Chance Gulch and more generally on the east side of South Last Chance Gulch, south of West Broadway Street, in between the Montana State Office Building and Lasso de Moon Toys Store. Planner Alvarez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Give me one moment while I get my slide presentation up. Thank you. As introduced, I am Michael Alvarez with the Community Development Department. And, and item A here is the Windbag Saloon CUP. Um, the subject as read by the mayor just now, um, I won't repeat. And, uh, so, uh, Title eleven, Chapter three, um, gives the City Commission the determination. I'm gonna just highlight Section B here. The City Commission's decision must be based on the information contained in the application, information presented at the public hearing and the zoning commission's recommendation. Um, the zoning commission approved this, a recommendation for approval on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two with a four-oh vote. The property was generally located, um, previously by the, the mayor's statement, uh, between the State Office Building and Lasso de Moon Toy Store. It is located in a DT downtown, downtown zoning district. So the applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to allow casino use in the downtown zoning district. Uh, the applicant currently has the use type of tavern, which is allowed by right in the downtown zoning district. Applicant is expanding into the recently vacated space next door, which is the fo- former Ghost Art Gallery, uh, with a bar lounge area. Uh, they've already purchased that space and has received a building permit for that expansion. In the rear of that bar lounge ar- uh, area, the applicant wants to add a gaming area with more than six machines. More than six machines will change their use type to a casino. And per the requirements of the downtown district, CUPs are required for casino use. So, uh, a casino is defined in our code as an establishment licensed for on-premises consumption of alcoholic beverages, which A is licensed for and has six or more video gaming machines or gambling devices, which is pertinent to tonight's application. And, uh, the downtown zoning district is intended to encourage the creation and preservation of mixed-use development opportunities, including a wide range of housing o- options serving a wide range of incomes and demographics, and to provide the protection and enhancement of historic and cultural resources, to establish minimum requirements and responsibilities for the installation of public improvements in support of redevelopment, and to encourage desirable site design for all development occurring in the district. These aspects are all essential for the development of a diverse, dynamic, and desirable city environment. So, um, the overall floor plan, um, this is provided by the architect, um, who is in attendance tonight and I believe will be presenting. Um, the highlighted area in pink is, uh, where the, is the former Ghost Art Gallery where the, um, casino is, or, uh, where the tavern is expanding into. The gaming area located in the back, um, is defined in the conditions as the gaming area, um, as per, um, uh, as per this floor plan. It's about five hundred and ten square feet. Um, some of the, um, conceptual renderings from the walking mall, uh, from just inside of the entry door, um, looking towards the gaming machine room from within, uh, the bar lounge area, and then, uh, finally, the gaming room. Um, so, Title eleven of, uh, Chapter three, Section four, subsections A, B, and C, they outline the evaluation process for conditional use permits, uh, wherein Section A are the standards that need to be met. Section B are the factors used to determine whether the standards in Section A are met. And Section C informs us that any adverse impacts on the standards of Section A may be used to justify the denial of a permit or the placement of conditions on that permit. Um, I do wanna draw your attention to number twelve, which is where, um, express public opinion related to the factors identified above requires us to, um, interpret public opinion, um, through the lens of, um, conditions or through the factors one through eleven. So, um, findings, um, that the walking mall is viewed as family-friendly and commenters considered a change in use from the art gallery casino to casino, um, from art gallery to casino for the space, um, would have an influence on the character in the area. And so a recommendation was attached because of this for no casino signage and no gambling activity visible from the mall. Um, conformity of the proposed use of neighborhood plan, if one has been adopted, um, this, um, uh, area, uh, created a recommendation or has a recommendation attached to it that gambling activity be restricted to the former art gallery space, um, and more specifically to that gaming area in the rear. Um, that, uh, noise from gaming machines was, uh, uh, may be disruptive to patrons in adjacent businesses. Um, there was a recommendation attached because of that, that gaming machine should not be heard from within adjacent buildings by occupants shopping and typically standing as close as two feet from the wall. And, um, all expressed public opinion collected by the Community Development Department, um, has been made available to you, the mayor and commission, um, for you to filter these things, um, through your, your own interpretation. Um, including an addendum that was sent this afternoon, um, that you all should have gotten in your emails. Um, so both the zoning commission and ci- and, um, city commission, uh, meetings were independently noticed, including a legal notice, uh, a legal ad placed in the Helena IR, uh, neighbor notices mailed to adjacent property owners, and, um, signs being placed on the premises. Um, it's worth noting here that an earlier proposal for this that was withdrawn was likewise noticed, um, in the Helena IR, um, had neighbor notices mailed and had a sign, um, placed on the premise. Um, the applicant withdrew the proposal, uh, to consider public comment that was received at that time, um, and to conduct their own public outreach and revise their proposal. Um, public comment collected for both of those proposals was included and given over to you. Um, so even though they withdrew that, that was included as its own addendum for you. Um, and, um, uh, the applicant also collected signatures on a, on a petition, uh, in support of the CUP. So, uh, the zoning commission's recommended motion, um, I have the original motion language, uh, that was changed, struck through, um, above. Um, the zoning commission recommended these change, changes in their public hearing. So, one, uh, gambling activity as defined by Montana Code annotated twenty-three-five-one-twelve-fourteen be restricted to the gaming area as shown in the site plan submitted, which is approximately five hundred and ten square feet, and not be visible from the walking mall, save for the existing sportsbook machine located near the entrance to the original Windbag Saloon. Two, gaming machines' volume be reduced to a level so that they cannot be heard of standing on the walking mall or in adjacent buildings if standing two feet away from the wall inside that space. Three, the word casino not be used in signage on the face of the building. Four, a no smoking sign be placed near the entrance of the casino on the outside of the building. And five, all conditions must be bet within one year of CUP approval as per Section eleven-three-nine of the Helena City Code. Um, I do want to, um, briefly pause here since it wasn't previously mentioned in my presentation for the no smoking sign. No smoking is not, uh, smoking is not permitted on the walking mall. This is here to reinforce that.
Thank you, Planner Alvarez. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Logan.
Thank you. Um, this first one will be easy, I think. What is a sports for Mr. Alvarez? What is a sports book machine?
Uh, they have a machine where, um, uh, not much of a gambler, um, uh, where, uh, betting can be placed on games, I imagine, um, like with money lines and, and things like that. Um, it's, it's already in place, that machine, but they can, they can place bets on sporting matches.
Okay. Not critical. Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh-
Go ahead.
So, could you go back to the slide that had the legal definition of a casino? And in Section B of that casino definition is licensed for and used to conduct any of the following types of gambling: Calcutta pools, live card games, live card games, tournaments, and live keno. Is any of that planned there?
No.
So it's just pretty much strictly the gaming machine in their proposal? Is that accurate?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, that is accurate. Um, and I will highlight for a moment, uh, some of the discussion that was had with that. Originally, a condition was placed, um, that first condition is, or I'm sorry, uh, condition number two was that, um, or I guess it's one and two. One, that gambling machines just be restricted to that gaming area in the rear, and that, um, other gambling activity, um, specifically devoted table games be restricted to just that one half, the new Ghost Art Gallery space. Um, zoning commission, uh, chose to further restrict, um, all gambling activity to the gaming area, and it is the intention of, um, the applicant to only have machines back there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I need to explore that just a bit. Is there some prohibition against the applicant? Should we agree with this CUP of having other forms of gambling other than machines? I mean, the law is pretty liberal once you are a casino as to the games. I mean, the, the motion before us doesn't restrict them to those machines. It just says where the machines will be located.
Uh, correct. So, um, it's the intention of this owner to only have, uh, gaming machines in that area. Um, it was considered, um, potentially overly restrictive over selling it in the future, that if somebody wanted to replace, five hundred and ten square feet is about the size of a, um, you know, two-car garage, that if somebody wanted to have, um, uh, replace that area with a couple of poker tables or something and take all the machines out, that they could do that. But it would still be restricted to that gaming, uh, that five hundred and ten square feet in the rear.
So, a follow-up, please. Uh, Mr. Alvarez, so how many machines do they plan to put in that area?
That number is not set in stone, um, and per, uh, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, but the, the applicant could perhaps answer that better. I believe it's about sixteen.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, in the-
Thank you. In the application, it talks about that they think a good comparison for folks to consider would be between Silver Star and Brew House. I don't know if Silver Star ever got a conditional use permit, but I know they only have five machines. Does the Brew House have, did they ever receive a conditional use permit? Or does anyone know?
I am not 100% sure about the Brew House. I did go and look for their conditional use permit and did not discover one.
Okay. Okay, and, and then just for clarity's sake, they would not need to come to the commission if they had five or fewer machines, correct?
Commissioner Dean, that is correct.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? We have the floor.
Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Ben Tintinger, I'm with Mosaic Architecture and project architect on, on this with the owner, Matt Schmeckel. Matt has owned the building, the entire building, since 2015, and the plan, ever since the building was bought by Matt, was that eventually, the Ghost Art Gallery, who leased the space, would, would move out of there and they would expand the space. We're just getting to some better images here, that are part of your packet. But I, I want to say this has been a really good conversation over the past number of months. It, I think we approached this somewhat naively when, when we thought we'd just put some gaming machines in the back area, similar to the Silver Star, which granted, they have five machines, but what I'm talking about is more the atmosphere of it than, than the total machines. I think we had submitted, knowing that it would be a CUP, but not knowing the stir that it would cause. So, when there was a lot of stir that came up on Facebook and came up through comments to, to Michael, we took a step back and said, okay, what, what are the concerns, and how can we best mitigate them through the planning and the architecture? The intent of this project has always been to build a, a bar, more of a lounge-type bar added on to the Windbag. The, the term casino causes all kinds of preconceived connotations of what a casino is, and, and I guess if I was to put my own definition on it, a casino is, is more something that that, that gambling is the business plan of that particular owner. Gambling is not necessarily the business plan of, of this particular addition. It is, you know, it is a source of income, but it is not the major business plan. The intent, like I said, is to have a really nice, comfortable lounge bar that happens to have some gaming machines, similar to many other establishments in Helena, that are quite comfortable. So, we did take a step back, we met with some of the neighbors, we got some input on what those concerns were, and we, we came back with a proposal where we actually proposed the conditions on this, and said, okay, let's put, make sure that all the gambling is in the back, that you can't see it, and I want to walk through some of the images with you, so that you can see that you can't see it. Let's see if I can get this to... Generally, with PDF, you can easily go to the next page, but... All right, sorry about that. Can you see it on the screen? So, am I supposed to be doing something different? Okay. So, I know you've looked through some of these images in, in terms of the packet that you were provided. The outside of this doesn't change, the parking, the access to the bars, that kind of thing stays the same. Michael certainly walked you through the plan of this. What I wanted to walk you through is in 3D, the images. So, this is what you see from the walking mall as you're standing outside. And again, there's, you know, the condition that, that we suggested, that we wouldn't put signage on this that said casino or gambling, or, or make that a highlight of this. We want people to see inside the lounge, see it as a very comfortable, inviting place. Once you step inside, it's, it's got that decor of more of a speakeasy feel to it, I guess. It'll have a copper bar top, it'll actually have the bar back from the old Windbag, the historic one. As you walk down through the space, this is an image, as you're standing, looking back towards the walking mall, clear in the back of the space. If you're standing at the bar, looking towards the gaming, this is what you see. So, you, you still don't see the gaming from even inside the bar, and it's not until you, you pass through where you have the gaming machines. You asked how many gaming machines there are. As planned, and as being built right now, actually, there's room for 15 games. Now, I don't know that 15 games will go in there, 15 machines will go in there right off the bat, but there is room for that, and there would be room for gaming tables, a card table, if some of the machines came out. But again, that gambling would happen in the back room. So, we, we came back with this submission that, that did make improvements, I think satisfied some of the concerns that folks had on the idea of this being a casino. Just in terms of a response to it being family-friendly in this area, I, I guess, I made the comment during the zoning commission, because that was on a Tuesday night, the previous Friday night, there were, it was 75 degrees out, and there was probably 400 people on the walking mall in front of Ten Mile, and Hawthorne, and the Rialto, and the ice cream shop. There were food trucks out there, there was a ton of families, and it was just, it was a great atmosphere. We saw that again last weekend after the vigilante parade. I think the, the mix of uses that happened down there could happen up here as well. Certainly, the Rialto is a casino, as defined by city code. That had no impact on the, the families that chose to be down there in that area on that weekend. And I guess, kind of commenting on, on where this is headed right now, it is under construction. We have a building permit for the space, we don't have a, obviously, a conditional use permit. I wished I could invited you all to walk through the space, because I think it makes a huge difference when you're able to, to actually walk through and see the space. But I guess my final comment would be, the discussion that happened through the zoning commission was, was really interesting, they kind of came full circle in that meeting. And what it came down to is the comment that this is a conditional use for something that is allowed to happen in downtown. Had casinos not been wanted by the city of Helena, the zoning code wouldn't allow them at all. In other words, you wouldn't be able to build a casino at all. I think the point that was made during the zoning commission is, as a conditional use, you can put conditions on this that mitigate the concerns, and that's what, that's what is happening with this. So, with that, I'll leave it up to your questions and comments and...
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions from the commission? Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
Hi, Mayor Collins, Commissioners, thank you so much for allowing me to speak before you. My name's Matt Schmeckel, and I am the owner of the Windbag Saloon. As the owner, I hear from customers and community members all the time that Helena is in need of more dynamic and vibrant nightlife options. It is my goal with this project to go some way in providing those. We've spent a considerable amount of time and resources submitting this proposal, revising it based on feedback, resubmitting it, getting full approval from the city zoning board, and we were able to move forward with the plan that took into consideration all the criteria that the city puts forward. I think we've come up with the solution that should really be a home run for the community, and it is my hope that you guys will follow the zoning board's lead and, you know, really try to foster an environment that's conducive to expanded nightlife activities in downtown Helena by supporting this proposal. So, I really do encourage you to vote in support of it. Thank you.
One minute. I heard you say nightlife.
Well...
So, when you say nightlife, when do you intend to open?
Yeah, I mean, I, that has not been fully determined, and perhaps that that term is a bit narrow. I don't have set operating hours in mind yet, especially, you know, with no clear guidance on whether or not this will be approved. I really don't know. I suspect that it would be open, you know, both during, probably from noon until bar close several days a week. So, I mean, it would probably be not exclusive to the evenings, although that's not something that I have really spent a ton of time considering, but it is something where I do hear all the time, how people want more opportunities in this town, including gambling, and, you know, we really are just attempting to expand those options to customers and members of the community.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments?
Mayor and Commissioners, John Andrew, I'm representing District One of the Helena Citizens Council. Neighborhood representatives of District One of the Helena Citizens Council urge the mayor and commission to deny the Windbag CUP. The 100 block of South Last Chance Gulch Walking Mall has a quiet, family-friendly atmosphere which warrants preservation. The popular Last Through the Moon toy store stands right next to the proposed casino. Art galleries, retail shops, offices, and mature trees give this block a quiet shaded feeling. The historic trolley, flower beds, public art, and water features have thoughtfully been designed to encourage children to play safely and to connect the walking mall with the public library and Anchor Park to the south. The stated intent of the relevant Helena zoning ordinance is to identify safe and appropriate locations for casinos. We do not think the Windbag location in the Boston Block is an appropriate place for expansion of gambling in the downtown. Casinos generate lucrative profits as well as state and local taxes, but offer little service to the community with limited employment opportunities and few social benefits. Helena currently supports 17 casinos. Residents feed 120 licensed gaming machines. We know that gambling stimulates magical thinking that ensures winpall profits for casino owners. Gaming machines are now in place in the Western Bar, the Gold Bar, the Rialto, Sapphire Lounge, Miller's Crossing, Silver Star, and Last Chance Casino. Is the downtown not yet fully saturated with gambling? On October 12th, 2022, the zoning commission approved the Windbag CUP with certain restrictions. The Windbag owner agreed to mitigate visual impacts by not using the word casino on the walking mall signage and placing gambling machines in a back room. The owner promised to offer no card tables and to attempt to curb illegal smoking on the walking mall. Each restriction recognizes common adverse effects of a casino, but are these restrictions enforceable? Our neighborhood business owners emphasize that retail shops, restaurants, taprooms, wine bars, grocery stores, galleries, and coffee houses do much more than bars or casinos to attract people to enjoy the downtown area. How many more shops can be displaced by casinos before the family-friendly atmosphere of the walking mall is no more? Our neighbors' views appear in many public comments on the Windbag CUP request. The clear majority strongly oppose any more casinos in the downtown area, and specifically oppose the Windbag Casino. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Rebecca Harbage, I live at 914 Dearborn Avenue and here in Helena. I am also the chair of the zoning commission. I am just here tonight to make myself available. I do think that our conversation is pretty well captured in the minutes, so hopefully you have those in your packets and you've had a chance to review them. I've heard zoning commission tossed out a couple of times tonight, so I just wanted to emphasize the fact that it was not a decision that we made lightly, and I'm available for questions, should you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sarah Hamblock, I am the owner of the Western Bar and the Gold Bar on 400 North, Last Chance Gulch. I am also the vice chair of Downtown Helena Incorporated, shortened to DHI, if I say that, that's the abbreviation. So first, I'd like to speak on behalf of DHI regarding development in downtown, which is relevant in this case. I'm just going to read our statement. Downtown Helena Inc. supports business development downtown and the choices made by said businesses. We, as DHI, want our downtown businesses to feel supported in the decisions that they make as we continue to improve the downtown area. Additionally, DHI will continue to look for more ways to fill vacant occupancies downtown, no matter the style or type of business. And so, this next section, I'm speaking as a downtown business owner. I personally support the approval of a conditional use permit for the Windbag. The conditions proposed by the zoning commission are very reasonable and achievable. A note on the condition regarding the noise from the gaming machines, we have gaming machines located in the Gold Bar and across the wall is the Western Bar, and in the mornings when I'm working in there, I can never hear the sound of the gaming machines through the wall, so just wanted to address that as a, as an actual lived experience. A further note on my experience in our location in downtown, we're across the street from the mercantile, just down the street from the Holter Art Museum, we're next to Queen City Ballet. There are families on our block all the time, and I don't think there are less families because we have gaming machines in our bar. Since the 2016 renovation, the Windbag Saloon has increased foot traffic on the walking mall significantly, and that ultimately benefits all businesses in downtown. Additionally, they have always conducted their business in a very professional manner, and I trust that they will continue to do so when they have a bar and casino attached to their business. When we have businesses that are ready to invest in our downtown community, especially when that development meets the downtown zoning, zoning district requirements that were read earlier by Mr. Alvarez, I believe it unwise to turn that... earlier by Mr. Alvarez, I believe it unwise to turn that investment away. And so I'm here to urge you all to support the Windbag in this conditional use permit. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Savannah Barrett. Helena has plenty of casinos already. What we are undersupplied with is quality retail downtown, especially on the walking mall. Yes, we have some great stores on the mall, but we need more to make the walking mall a true shopping destination. If we fill ground-level spaces with casinos and their non-job-producing machines, that would be a huge mistake for the future of downtown Helena. Helena is growing, and with more and more people interested in living downtown in the next few decades as Helena grows, we won't be looking at a need for more downtown casinos. Instead, we'll be wondering why we don't have room for quality retail. We need the walking mall to be zoned in its own district within the downtown zoning district so that the historic aesthetic, unique retail, and family-friendly charm does not continue to be replaced with low-foot-traffic businesses that do not bring Helennans downtown or attract tourists. The walking mall currently does not have its own unique district within the downtown zoning district. Until this zoning is changed, I fear we will continue to see the walking mall deteriorate. Casinos do not provide jobs or offer any real service to the community. They give nothing back except debt and addiction. Is this what we want to promote in Helena's most historic and treasured shopping area? By allowing a casino, we allow the growth of an industry that consciously exploits the predictable weakness of the most vulnerable people. Once this space is allowed to operate as a casino, it will always be zoned for casino use, and this could be an irrevocable damage to downtown Helena and the walking mall specifically. The Windbag is open until 12:00 a.m. currently and operates as a bar and tavern with no drinking cutoff like the more family-oriented breweries comply with. I'm worried about more intoxicated behavior, more vomit and smoking on the walking mall, and less of a family-friendly atmosphere. The walking mall is a unique place established for community purposes, retail, restaurants, galleries, art, public urban space that fit the historic character of Helena and the desires of our citizens. More drinking and gambling is not what we need here. I'm asking you to consider the consequences of another casino and to oppose the Windbag Casino CUP. Please help us keep our community healthy. Please help the businesses who provide real services to stay in business and help the walking mall flourish as a shopping and dining destination. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I did not get that last participant's name.
Savannah Barrett.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Collins and Commissioners, my name is Paul Paccini. I live about four blocks away from the walking mall. I was born and raised in Montana, and I wanted to add a perspective that being born and raised in Montana might be unique to other people who haven't been around that long. I was raised in Black Eagle, which is a small town across the Missouri River from Great Falls. I experienced sort of a John Boy-type childhood, innocent, clean, fun. And my first experience with gambling was many years later, actually in the mid-eighties. I was born in 1947. I left Montana for work, and I was gone for six years. When my wife and I returned to Montana after those six years, I still very clearly remember driving down Euclid Avenue for the first time in a long time and seeing it dotted with casinos, bright signs and lights. And I couldn't believe it. I, what happened to Helena? What happened to Montana? And then the state actually joined the party by implementing a state lottery. And I thought, I don't understand this. The state is partially funding its activities with gambling. And how does that contribute to society? What does it do for people other than give them a room in which to go and bet money that they're going to win? There just didn't seem to be a real return to it to me, and I couldn't figure out why it's overtaking us. But now it's overtaking our walking mall. And to me, and I think to a lot of people in Helena, the walking mall has almost a sacred air to it. It's a place with an ice cream shop, a confectionery, a toy shop. It's a place with trees and bushes and even a reconstructed Last Chance Gulch stream that flows through it with three miners mining gold. It's a place, it is a sanctuary. We have seven, I believe Mr. Andrews listed seven casinos already in the downtown area. One or two of those are on the walking mall. I think his comments are valid. Isn't that enough? Now, I really do appreciate the effort that Mike and Matthew, is that right? Yeah, okay. I do appreciate their efforts at trying to mitigate the effects of gambling, but gambling is still gambling. And it's just ironic, for example, that we want to open another casino on the walking mall. I mean, gamblers aren't known for being avid walkers, and there are plenty of other casinos that they can search out within walking distance of the walking mall. So I guess the only redeeming factor that I can think of for locating another casino on the walking mall is that one other facility that you can find on the walking mall is an addiction clinic. So they don't have to go for help. They don't have to go very far for help. I just think it is such a shame to start defacing our walking mall with a casino. And again, I appreciate the efforts that were made to mask it, to keep it quiet, no signs. Those are all steps in the right direction. But I would certainly feel much better, and I think many Helennans would, if the owners of the Windbag utilize that extra space to just enlarge their lounge rather than putting up to sixteen gaming machines in there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Amy Barrett, and my daughter and I own Last Through the Moon Toys next door to the proposed casino. And as the owner of a business that serves children and families, I strongly oppose permitting a casino right next door. The downtown walking mall was created to be the premier pedestrian-friendly shopping district. The loss of two beloved forty-plus-year-old businesses on our block in the last four months has been really crushing, and to think that they would be replaced with gambling-driven, alcohol-driven establishment is very discouraging. Our business is devoted to the health and welfare of our youngest and most impressionable citizens, so the addictive nature of alcohol and gambling is troubling, and the safety and family-friendly aspect of our block will surely be affected if a casino is allowed. I'm concerned about the safety aspect of having a casino right next door as the walking mall is rarely patrolled by our already stretched-thin police force. The Windbag's application states that the nearest church is on Ewing Street. Is the commission aware that Grace Community Fellowship Church meets right across the walking mall in the Dunphy Building, less than three hundred feet from the proposed casino? Head Start Childcare is also just down at the south end of the block near the library. They use the walking mall and the trolley as playplaces for the children regularly, so that is another concern. I think this is a great time for our community and officials to direct the vision stated in the Downtown Helena Master Plan, making our walking mall and downtown corridor a destination for locals and tourists with vibrant shops, galleries, and restaurants on the ground floor and low-foot-traffic offices and residents on the upper floor. And casino is not necessarily a high-foot-traffic business. Most come in and sit and stay for hours, I guess. I don't know. I would like to see more defined zoning regulations to protect and facilitate what locals and visitors expect from our historic downtown. I see absolutely no benefit to our community by allowing the Windbag to expand gambling on the walking mall. Please vote against this casino. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I do have a hand raised and a written public comment online.
Please, open them up.
First, with their hand raised online, I have Kevin Ward.
You have the floor, Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor Collins. I'm a resident of Helena. I've lived here for the majority of my thirty years. I think change is difficult for a lot of people in this community. I remember growing up in Helena and having the walking mall empty and having very few places to do anything and very few places to gather and to spend time with community members, with families, et cetera. I think it took a lot of courage for the commission to make the necessary changes in areas like Big Dipper and Rialto and the Ten Mile and the Hawthorne to allow a public space for people to spend time. And I think there is similar resistance to those changes, and I think those changes have been positive. I think we need more spaces in Helena as our community is growing and more and more people are coming here for them to gather and to have entertainment options. I know not everybody enjoys the process of gambling, and I know that people are frustrated at times with results of gambling, but it is more things for people to do and to spend time in this community. I think Helena has an opportunity to become more business-friendly and to have more businesses that are in downtown that aren't open for small hours during the day, that have empty sort of spaces that people can't afford to rent out. I worry that by reducing our ability to have, you know, more businesses invest in this community, whether that's a casino, whether that's a bar, whether that's a brewery, whether that's a new restaurant, whether that's an art gallery, whether that's a new toy store, I think it limits our ability to drop people to the city, to drop people to the city center, and to have more experiences like Mr. Alvarez was talking about where there were four hundred people in the walking mall spending time. I don't think that's a negative experience. Just I would like to support the decision to make this update. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
I have one written comment from Mickey Zirker.
Please read it.
Commissioners and Mayor, I have to leave, but wanted to make public comment on the CUP 11A. The BID encourages business development in our downtown. Our goal is to fill all vacant lots as this provides vitality and vibrancy in our unique downtown. Thus, the BID supports filling vacant lots, but we do not support or deny business operations. And that is all.
Would you repeat the last sentence?
Thus, the BID supports filling vacant lots, but we do not support or deny business operations.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Comments from the commission, final comments before we hit the road.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the applicant.
Please.
So I believe.
The applicant.
For the applicant.
Sir, would you come up, please?
Thanks.
No problem.
So I understand, you own the Mar Bar in Missoula, too, correct?
I do not. That is like my parents and, rather, my dad and two other partners that I am not related to own the Mar Bar in Missoula.
Okay, got it. I was reading an article that was apparently mistaken in 2015.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, that's all right.
I'm quite familiar with it, though.
Yes. Are there machines in the Mar Bar?
There are not.
Okay. I was just curious, because I know that the menus are, you know, similar and similar vibes, so I.
Fairly similar, yeah.
Yes.
They don't have a gaming license as part of their all-beverage license.
Okay, got it. That's very helpful. And I guess, so my other question, too, I know, I mean, I know the ambiance that you all have described in the application is similar to that of Silver Star and Brew House. I guess, is there a reason that you decided to go for the CUP without instead just putting in the five machines that didn't require first to see how it went and then consider, you know, moving on if so?
Sure. I mean, I guess we, sorry, this microphone's a bit loud. So when we purchased the Windbag in 2015, it had only a restaurant beer and wine license associated with it. So at that point, we did seek out and purchase the all-beverage license that had formerly belonged to O'Toole's, which is now closed, which included gaming as part of it. And, you know, as part of the effort to purchase that, we were, you know, in a competitive bidding process with a number of other prospective buyers. And, you know, the gaming aspect of that license was reflected in the dollar amount that we ultimately ended up paying to acquire that license. So I guess the best way to answer the question is, you know, it was quite expensive to acquire that license, and in so doing, you know, it's always been our intention to utilize every aspect of it to try and generate some sort of return on it. I guess it's also, you know, not something that I really anticipated getting quite as much concerned feedback in regards to. I, you know, was under the impression in reading the city bylaws that a casino is allowed to exist downtown. And, you know, as we met with Michael Alvarez in city planning, we really tried to come up with a plan that really took into consideration all the concerns that were laid out. And I guess I was under the impression that we really came up with a plan that actively did take those into consideration and satisfied them to a large degree, to the extent that the zoning commission did unanimously approve it. So I guess the answer is, you know, I never anticipated not utilizing it because I didn't, you know, to my mind, there is no real negative connotation associated with the word casino. It's not prohibited under city code. It does want you to meet certain. It does want you to meet certain criteria, which I think we have satisfied, and by doing that, you know, it's my possibly biased opinion that we should be approved for the license, so.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, any other final comments before we entertain a motion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we deny a conditional use permit to allow casino use in the downtown zoning district for property legally described as parcel twenty-two of the first subdivision of the last chance revision of a portion of the original town site of Helena, Montana, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and lot twenty-three A, as shown on amended plat of lot twenty-three of the first subdivision of the last chance revision of a portion of the original town site of Helena, Montana, as shown on the amended plat filed under document number four-four-three-eight-three-zero-b, Records of Lewis and Clark County, Montana. I don't know if the rest is necessary in this motion. And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to speak to my motion.
Please continue with the motion.
I, you want me to read all of this?
Please.
The property is loca, it seems like less than legal. The property is located at nineteen South Last Chance Gulch, and more generally on the east side of South Last Chance Gulch, south of West Broadway Street, in between the Montana State Office Building and Lasso the Moon Toy Store. And, Mr. Mayor, I, we have heard plenty about this casino over the last several months, and I think the preponderance of testimony that I've received is opposed, and it's predicated on what does the Last Chance Mall, Walking Mall, mean to us here in Helena, historically, culturally, for those who live there, for those who play there, for those who go to school there, for those who go to church there, and for those who have retail businesses that want to thrive there. So that is my motion, and I have spoken to that motion and given rationale to that motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion from the commission?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd just maybe like to speak a little bit to my rationale as to why I seconded...
Please.
Commissioner Fever's motion. I really appreciate the applicant's work and effort that they've gone to to mitigate the efforts of the casino. But I guess I tend to agree with Commissioner Fever, and it seemed like in the presentation by Mr. Alvarez that one of the filters through which we can look is that of public opinion. And I think whether it was the most current proposal or the previous proposal, significant amount of feedback from the public against this idea. And we're charged with making a decision here tonight about this conditional use permit, and I also appreciate the zoning commission's efforts to wrestle with this, but ultimately we are representatives of citizens of Helena, and based on the feedback that we've received, that's why I seconded Commissioner Fever's motion. Thank you.
Any final comments? Any others? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Fever.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Nay.
The motion carries forward to one.
Thank you. Consider a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a worship facility use in the R3 residential zoning district for a property with a legal description of lots one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, together with the alley vacated per ordinance number two-zero-eight-zero, adjacent to those lots all in block thirty-three of the Grand Avenue addition to the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. The property is located at two-two-one-zero Dodge Avenue and generally occupies the entirety of the block bordered by Elm Street and North Side, Dodge Avenue on the east side, Cedar Street on the south side, and National Avenue on the west side. Planner Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Item bead tonight, as introduced by the mayor, is the Helena First Assembly Church of God CUP. I am Michael Alvarez, and I am a planner with the Community Development Department. The subject is to consider this resolution granting a conditional use permit, as just read by the mayor. Title eleven, chapter three, section seven. Going to highlight again section B here. The city commission's decision must be based on the information contained in the application, information presented at the public hearing, and the zoning commission's recommendation. The city commission may approve, deny, or conditionally approve the requested conditional use permit. Approval or conditional approval must be accomplished by resolution. So this property's general location was just stated by the mayor. One further thing that I would mention with it, it's just north of, north Last Chance Gulch, in that section beyond East Lindell Avenue and connecting through to North Montana. And this area is disowned as an R3 residential zoning district. So the applicant is seeking a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow a worship facility use in the R3 residential zoning district. Applicant currently has the use type of worship facility, and the applicant is looking to expand their current facilities by uniting their two existing buildings. It is that action of expansion that is requiring the CUP. So a worship facility is a building designed and used for public worship by a religious body group, sect, or organization, but not including church residences and private schools. And the R3 district provides for the development of a mixture of residential structures to serve varied housing needs and allows limited compatible non-residential uses. Historically, worship facilities were allowed by right in the R3 residential district, but currently require a CUP as per city code. So as we can see here with the concept drawings provided, the new addition is primarily going to be occupied by a new worship space. This worship space will be larger than the current worship space, which more or less would be down where the commons lounge is indicated on this floor plan. Here are some of the renderings. The first is from the southwest corner, looking across that parking lot. Then, moving clockwise, we have the southeast corner, looking back up across the driveway entrance there, and then we have the west side entrance. The rendering that I draw your attention to here is the bottom right-hand corner. This is the northeast parking lot. It's the one in the renderings that was, this is the rendering that best demonstrates that parking lot. That parking lot received a number of variances that I'll be getting to in a moment. And then, just to go back inside the second floor, we'll have additional balcony seating. So it is going to be a fairly large upgrade in seats. There's additional details in your packet materials. So title eleven, chapter three, section four, subsections A, B, and C outline the evaluation process for conditional use permits, where section A, wherein section A are the standards that need to be met, section B are the factors used to determine whether the standards in section A are met, and section C informs us that any adverse impacts on the standards of section A may be used to justify the denial of a permit or the placement of conditions on that permit. And again, special attention to subsection B twelve, wherein expressed public opinion related to factors identified above, so requires us to reevaluate sections one through eleven through the lens of public opinion. So this CUP was associated with five variances that were heard by the Board of Adjustments on May third, two thousand and twenty-two, and all five were granted. They mostly concerned trying to preserve the parking lot in its current configuration in the northeast, the northeast parking lot. That had been designed with compact car spaces as one of its, as one of its design features at the time. Compact car spaces no longer allowed by city code, and so that was the source of a number of the variances. Additionally, there were some variances, there's a variance for the maximum lot coverage and screening of the parking lots. So, public comment identified on-street parking as an area of concern with this proposal. There were in total two public comments. Both were in opposition. The granted variances associated with the CUP allow the facility to maintain the number of parking, the same number of parking spots as it currently has. And I do want to identify that city code allows worship facilities to use on-street parking for up to ninety percent of their parking requirements, so long as they are connected with pedestrian amenities. And I also want to note that Helena First Assembly has made parking agreements with six adjacent businesses for the use of their parking lots. Both the zoning commission and sitting commissions were independently noticed, including legal ad in the Helena IR, neighbor notices mailed to adjacent property owners, and a sign was placed on the premises, different signs for both meetings. And of course, the Board of Adjustments was also similarly noticed. Two public comments were collected for this proposal and are included in your packet materials. Both comments were in opposition to the proposal. Again, as I did with the previous CUP, my original language has a strike through it. At the zoning commission meeting, the conditions were amended. First, a building permit must be submitted for the expansion within two years, and second, all conditions must be met within two years of CUP approval as per section eleven-three-nine of the Helena city code.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Comments or questions from the commission? Mr. Alvarez, I have one question for you. The interaction with the neighborhood, would you speak about that?
Mayor and Commission, the interaction with the neighborhood, the comments were generally in concern larger services. Some of the parking can block driveways. I'm not entirely comfortable interpreting on-the-spot their comments, but I would say that above and beyond the city's public outreach, I know that the applicant tried to hold a, or held a neighborhood meeting, and the public comments that I collected were actually essentially addressed to the applicant, and I was CC'd on them to enter them into this record.
Did they send out letters, sir? Cards?
Mayor and Commission, yes. The First Assembly Church mailed out to adjacent neighbors.
Adjacent neighbors? Who do you consider adjacent neighbors?
I believe they were following the Community Development Department standard of a hundred fifty feet.
How many neighbors were there, you know?
I, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me, and I'm not prepared to speak to it. It was roughly a couple dozen.
Good, thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I have a similar question, mostly around the comments that we had in the packet from the neighbors about people parking in front of their homes and issues concerning that. Is there, and we didn't get any, you know, response to those. We didn't see any response from the applicant to those neighbors. But do you know if, you know, what we might be able to do to help address some of those concerns? I anticipate that when you build, you know, build it and they will come. I would anticipate a growth in, you know, the congregation with this, and so I think likely an issue that will continue.
Mayor and Commission, it's my understanding, as they did at the zoning commission, the applicant is going to speak to this. They have in the past, after receiving a complaint from neighbors, begun placing a cone in their driveway, or on either side of their driveway to better mark that space. And in preparation for this, they went out and got those cross-parking agreements. Those are all new to this application, which is going to, which provides them, I believe, around a hundred and forty more parking spaces, a hundred and fifty.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Do we have the applicant?
Mayor and Commissioners, I am Ben Tintinger, Mosaic Architecture Principal and Project Architect, and I want to clarify, there is no gambling in the church. But I'm gonna have Doug Greenman, the pastor at the church, speak to some of your questions about the neighbor, the neighbors. But there was a neighborhood meeting where all of the surrounding folks were invited. It was a list that came from Michael, actually, that went out to those neighbors to invite them, and there were actually only three that showed up to that meeting, and they are the ones, they were the ones that were opposed. So there were a few things that we are responding to architecturally, and I'll talk about those just briefly. I do want to say that, you know, the church has made a significant investment in this property over the years. They bought the property in nineteen sixty-five and built the original church. Since then, there have been many additions, including the current worship space that was done as an addition, the building of the kids, what we call the kids' building, which is the multipurpose block building that has a gym in it. They also, Kitty Corner from this, not on this particular property, but Kitty Corner took over the old dairy, right? It was dairy space, and made the youth building, which is the middle school through high school space. So over the years, there have been additions in nineteen seventy-two and seventy-eight and two thousand and eight. There have been a number of remodel projects that have happened over the years within the building. The buildings are extremely well-maintained and cared for. If you walk into the buildings, they seem like they're brand-new. I mean, they, the finishes seem brand-new because they take care of them. The exterior is taken very well care of as well. There's mature landscaping on the site. There's mature landscaping on the site, and the building's exterior, while very dated-looking, they are well-maintained. And so our intention with this addition is to create a worship space that is big enough to handle their, all of their folks at one worship, rather than the four that they currently have over the, over the week. We do, let's see if I can.
Did you say four?
Yeah. Yeah, that's correct, right? Four? Mm-hmm. And that includes Wednesday service. As you can see, it's the, and Michael pointed this out, it's R3 zoned between B2 and the R2, and was originally created way back when as a buffer zone. There are many, many churches in our community that are within residential areas and are not part of a buffer area, but embedded in those residential areas. And certainly, parking is always a problem with all of those churches to one degree or another, and I think it's more of a management issue than anything. And again, Doug will speak to this in a minute. But the project as it stands, this is the current worship space and office space, as well as the infants and nursery in the lower floor, and then this is the kids' building. With the new addition, our intent here was to locate this in such a way that we didn't lose much parking on-site, and hence the variances that we requested and discussed with the Board of Adjustment last week. Our goal was to build over a portion of the existing building and infill a current playground area that's in the middle in order to accomplish this and not lose any parking and make the connections. One of the improvements we are going to make, I guess it's, it depends on how you see this, whether it's an improvement or not, but the neighbors are concerned about this play area right here, right across the street from their space. So we are actually going to take that play space away. It's really minimally needed, given that the kids are there for a couple hours on Sunday. There's plenty of classroom space on the inside and play area space on the inside. Most of the community activity will happen on this south side. This is where the main entrance is. This is where most people will park and the adjacent, and we can't scroll down far enough to that, but the adjacent commercial parking lots that are on the south and the east. So folks are going to be coming from the south and the east to enter the main entry. It'll mostly be staff parking in the northeast parking lot. Again, 700-seat worship space. The rest of the space feeds that worship, including commons area and fellowship areas. The nursery and educational areas for grade-school kids is in this, remains in this building, but it'll be much improved. And then admin will move to an upper-floor space as well. The building we hope to significantly improve the looks of, and of course, this is all contingent on costs and budget and everything like that, but this is the plan thus far So with that, I'll leave it up to questions for me, and then we'll ask Doug to come up.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Tintinger, would you go back to the bird's-eye view of the property, please?
The site plan right here?
One more.
Oh, one more?
Down, one more.
Okay, right here.
Nope. The one that actually shows the building, not the architectural drawings.
Oh.
No. From the bird's-eye view. You had it on-screen here not very long ago.
Did I?
Keep going up, 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 up.
Okay. Oh, this, okay.
Perfect.
Yeah.
You know, the arrow points to the issue at hand. The other, if you will, perimeter is part of the church, but it isn't a part of the design that we're looking at here tonight. The CUP is only for where the arrow is pointed, and I would just like to point out that, you know, the residence is on the north and west side, but it's all commercial on the east and south side. And I think you pointed out that this church was first built or conceived here in town in 1965, so it's long been in this neighborhood. Can you respond to exactly what might happen if, in fact, this CUP is not authorized?
Well, you know, they're certainly a growing congregation, and in fact, had looked to build out on McHugh and own property out on McHugh currently. But they came back to this, this idea of remaining here in town and remaining on this site for a lot of different reasons, financially, but also because it's centrally located and it meets the needs of their congregation. And there's been a lot of investment in this particular property, and so finding somebody else that can take this property and properly care for it and develop it is, you know, that's difficult to do, so.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, so I'm just look, the area for services, I guess it's called worship space, and we'll seat 700.
Mm-hmm. They're small compared to other places, you know?
Yeah, we actually took a road trip and visited some churches, and in particular, one down in Billings that is something else to see. It's a, it's a big church and a big auditorium. So their service in Billings is similar in a way to what Helena First does here. And, you know, it takes a lot of energy to put on the worship the way it's done at Helena First, and so the idea of doing that four times a week is tough. It takes a whole lot of energy. So this is going to help solve some of those issues and bring more people together.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we have any public comments? Any other public comments concerning this topic?
Greetings, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Brian Copeland, 1610 Hudson Street, number two. Mike, I basically have a question for the church.
No, no.
It is about this and the issues.
You ought to give your comments, sir.
Yes, it's about the family promise program. Since you guys are going to be expanding this church and getting this, are you guys participating in the family promise program and in this expansion?
Mr. Copeland, you ought to address the commission and give your comment to the commission.
Okay. Well, basically, my question is, we really need to work with the programs in the community, like the family promise program, where the churches are participating and giving temporary shelter for our homeless population, because after the COVID crisis, our homeless population has been, I mean, services have been decimated to a degree that it's really disgusting. So I'm asking a question about whether or not the partnership between the community, the government, and the programs that provide services for the homeless, and whether or not there, the churches are considering as part of their expansion process to participate in the family promise program and to make more services available, like possibly a shower facility where the homeless people could, or possibly if the gym facility could participate with the family promise program, because we need more shelter space for our homeless population. We've got to quit ignoring this problem. We have to start dealing with it and figuring out community partners that each can take a bite of the elephant. All right, that's, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Doug Greenman.
Good evening.
I'm the associate pastor at Helena First Assembly. Thank you for considering this conditional use permit. It means a lot to us. As a church, we're thankful to have been able to serve our community for really over 85 years. It was started during the Great Depression by a couple of women that got things going, and over 50 years at this location, really making what we hope has been a positive impact on the Helena community, bringing people hope that are in despair, helping to restore marriages and change the legacy of families, giving kids a positive environment in which to develop and grow, providing them with backpacks every year full of school supplies, helping to make what we hope is a dent in things like suicide and incarcerations, showing appreciation to our public servants in a variety of tangible ways, filling sandbags, distributing, it just goes, it goes on and on, and we don't really take personal credit for this. We're thankful to have been used by God for these purposes and really to be an integral part of our Helena community. But in light of that, it has been disheartening to hear a couple of recent complaints. Even one complaint or concern is unsettling to me as a pastor, because we've endeavored to be good neighbors. That on the surface, the complaints have sounded substantial about, you know, the blocked driveways and such, but when you consider our presence for over 50 years in the neighborhood, the amount of blocked driveways has been maybe one every 15 years when you divide that over that period of time. So just to give some perspective there, it might be similar to what anybody would experience in a neighborhood where you have families gathering together for Thanksgiving or a graduation party or something like that. But we have taken the complaint seriously, however. As was mentioned, for the past six years, we have placed no parking cones in those particular driveways. That's been successful. That has worked well. We've also, as Ben mentioned, moved, removed our playground to consider the concerns of the neighbor with the noise of the playground that close to their house. We've obtained the parking agreements. Actually, we have 177 additional parking spaces in the businesses, which are actually on the side where our main entrances are versus where the neighbors live on the north side of the building. A documented observance we made at our highest-attended service this last Easter was that there were no cars parked in front of the houses where complaints were registered, without our saying anything to our congregation about those concerns or complaints. Our variance requests and design are really not only intended for our benefit, but also for our neighbors' benefit, really attempting to keep as much on-site parking as we can, preventing, like blocking fences in a compound feel that some of the codes would require if we were to put up fences and screenings. We don't want it to feel like a confined facility that would be blocking the neighbors. Also, just decreasing the number of hours our facility would be holding services. As mentioned, how many services we do hold, we tried more, but it was killing our staff. It was just wiping our team out. So this, we wouldn't be going down to one service, we'd be going down to two. The benefit would be the timeframe that we actually have people on-site would be lessened as well for the neighborhood, hopefully serving in that way. Complaints related, as was mentioned, to our youth building aren't related to this conditional use permit, but I will tell you, we are taking all concerns seriously, and we want it to be a good neighborhood, to continue to be good neighbors, as we feel like we have been for the last 50 years. Again, thanks for hearing this. Thank you for, during this long meeting tonight. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no other online comments.
Okay. I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we grant a conditional use permit to allow worship facility use in the R3 residential zoning district for a property with a legal description of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, together with the alley vacated per ordinance number 2080 adjacent to those lots, all in Block 33 of the Grand Avenue, addition to the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. The property is located at 2210 Dodge Avenue and generally occupies the entirety of the block bordered by Elm Street on the north side, Dodge Avenue on the east side, Cedar Street on the south side, and National Avenue on the west side.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak to my motion? I'm on the Board of Adjustments.
If you will, there's always a time for any additional comments from the commission, and then you can go ahead. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments from the commission? If none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, after this vote is over, we can address the issue, but as the maker of a motion, I am entitled to speak to that motion.
I did ask if there were any additional comments, and you stood there, or you sat there and didn't say anything. Are there any additional comments from the commission?
Yes, I would like to, because I really like this project, and I certainly hope I have not now in any way damaged it by speaking on behalf of it. The fact is, this church has been there a long time. It occupies the neighborhood well. It will look even better when all of this is done, and it's just a minimal, if you will, issue with a couple of neighbors, and I think the church has done a great job addressing those concerns. The Board of Adjustments did consider all the variances, and we adopted them all just last week. I would hate like the dickens to see a building like this or a congregation like this to move out of town, and then we'd have a building in town that didn't have a church in it, and I don't know how we would, if you will, fill that building space. This is just a perfect opportunity for us to show support for an iconic building in Helena. I hope that we pass this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Madam Clerk. Oh, and I know there were variances that we were supposed to address, and I...
Just one question, Mr. Mayor. The commission can only approve a conditional use permit by passing a resolution, and I'm not sure the motion mentioned passing the resolution. I believe that the motion just said approve a conditional use permit. And the reason that the resolution is important is because it lays out all of the factors that you're required to consider, and it notify, or, yeah, it notes for the record that you have considered all of those factors and applied them, and you found the conditions to be met under the code.
So I should restate my motion, is what you're saying?
Please.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Eric. So, Mr. Mayor, I move a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow worship facility use in the R3 residential zoning district for a property with a legal description of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11, together with the alley vacated per ordinance number 2080 adjacent to those lots, all in Block 33 of the Grand Avenue, addition to the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. The property is located at 2210 Dodge Avenue and generally occupies the entirety of the block bordered by Elm Street on the north side, Dodge Avenue on the east side, Cedar Street on the south side, and National Avenue on the west side.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission?
I have no further comment, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Fever.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. I know Helena Citizens Council was not here when we asked. We still gave you an opportunity to speak if you're around. Do we have Helena Citizens Council here? Do we have Helena Citizens Council here? Madam Clerk, anybody online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Do we have anybody online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I see no hands raised. I have no written public comment online.
Okay. Any final comments? This meeting is adjourned.